Welcome to the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting is being held at 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. The meeting is being broadcast live on the town's informational cable channel 1301 and will be aired several times throughout the week. It will also be available on the town's website. I am Keith Frost, Planning Commission Chair, and I will ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, Jamie Feig.
Hello, Jeannie Michaels.
And Chris Brownlee.
Staff present.
Britt Poole, Town Administrator.
John Hanson, Director of Planning.
Jessica Libran, Assistant Zilling Administrator.
That's enough. All right, thank you very much. At this time, if you would please bow your heads and join me in invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the grace that you give us each day. We pray that you will be with this body as we deliberate the business of this community. Pray that you will be with our leaders, both nationally and locally. Bless this town, bless this state, and bless our country. I ask all these things in your holy name. Amen. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is approval of our regular meeting minutes from October 20th, 2020.
So move.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Jarrett, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. First item of new business is rezoning of a portion of tax map or property located at 4800 Block of Augusta Road. John?
Thank you and welcome back. It's been a couple of months since we've met. Just so you know, the first three items on your agenda are all related to the proposed JCF Living facility. That's item three. In order for that to move forward, first you have to address the rezoning request and then you would have to address annexation of an additional six acres of property and then we could get to the site plan. So anybody who doesn't have the agenda knows the way we've got it set up. JCF Living has submitted a request to rezone approximately 53 acres of a parcel located in the 4800 Block of Augusta Road. The property is currently zoned general commercial. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to high-density residential to facilitate the development of an apartment project on the property.
All right. Any discussions, questions, John? John, you've, I guess you mentioned apartment. And I know it may be jumping ahead a little bit, but we've looked at the sketch plan and it's a little different, I guess, a little unique from apartments that we've normally seen. I guess housements is the term.
That's what the developer calls it, a housement. It's operated as an apartment, but it's built as a more of a single-family duplex-type facility.
Okay. But appropriately fits within the high-density residential.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Questions about the rezoning?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
John, refresh my memory. We've had this, we've had this same piece of property before, haven't we not?
Yes, sir. And about a year and a half ago, there was a proposal to put a single-family residential subdivision on the property. And that required a rezoning as well. Would have required it.
And that was a PR2?
That would have required, the proposed project that was from two years ago, year and a half ago, was, would have required PR2 zoning.
Do you know maybe off the top of your head roughly when it was annexed into the city?
Uh...
How long ago was that?
Decades, I believe.
I think it was at least the early 2000s. Questions? Discussion?
There may be some people here to comment on the rezoning itself.
Yeah, I guess if we don't have any more questions from the group, I guess if there are folks in the audience that would like to speak to the rezoning request, you're welcome to do so. You would please introduce yourself and your affiliation. If you come to the microphone.
If you haven't already and you plan to speak, please sign in for the record.
Good morning. My name is Brian Coyle. I'm the Director of Development for JCF Living. If you have any questions, kind of more specific towards our product, I'll just kind of give you a brief description. We are a single, a quasi-single-family rental developer out of Nashville, pursuing projects in the southeast that are geared towards the millennial young professional that's coming, kind of transitioning out of college and not quite ready to go into and buy their first home. So we, you've heard the term housement. It is a duplex structure that we've got patented at the current time that when you walk in, it has six or three walls of glass, but gives you the feel and the appearance that you are actually in a single-family home by having the entries located either in the front of the home or the second one on the side of the home. And then we like to give our properties a green aspect along with the about 1,000, 700 to 1,000 square feet of rental space that you're renting in the structure. We're also trying to provide that amount of green space in a backyard to give you the lifestyle of that you would with a single-family home.
Okay. All right. And I think we're, we'll have time to discuss that. I think can talk through your proposal as we get to item three. I guess from a strict rezoning perspective, I guess, do you have any comments about why we should rezone this from commercial to high-density residential, such as appropriate use for the area?
Yeah, it is a perfect, yeah. We love the area. I mean Augusta Road is a great corridor between downtown Lexington and downtown Columbia. We feel that it's a great, perfect location for our product. Just when I came and I visited it three or four months ago for the first time, knew that this was exactly kind of the parcel that we are looking for, for our product.
And you say you've built this product in other in...
Yeah, we've got, we've got two properties going on in Huntsville, Alabama at the current time, one going on in Lebanon, Tennessee, and working through entitlement in the Panama City area on two other projects.
There's nothing you've had long-term like that?
They, we've owned one in Kokomo, Indiana, which our owner of the company developed about five years ago just to test the market to see how it would do. It took off and did very well for him there, was advised to move to the southeast. So our property in Huntsville, Alabama, as soon as we get a unit CO'd, it gets leased. And so we have a pretty high unit, unit rental percentage at the current time.
And do y'all leave the development after you finish and don't...
No, we plan on holding, yeah, we plan on holding them at the current time.
While I recognize it's not like a true apartment, I guess multifamily, you know, four or five stories. When you looked at the numbers relative to occupancy levels in and around the market, that was one of your variables, I guess?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we kind of geared towards where we feel we can get the rents at with our product. Lexington area was, hit it right at the market at that 1450 to 1750 rental per month rate and looked like it would sustain our product.
All right. Any other questions or comment related to the rezoning request that's before us? Any other discussion? I will, I'll be honest with you. We've seen this property several times. I think I was fairly new on the Planning Commission when it was first brought to the town back in the early 2000s. And I think the vision seems to have been from the very beginning of a general commercial piece of property. And we've looked at different types of residential and each time I think this body has looked towards retaining that general commercial. I know there are, there have been limitations from ingress and egress due to the way Dooley Road is shaped, the access to Dooley Road and the existing driveway. But it's my understanding, I think there's also significant plans for relocation of Dooley Road, stoplight, signaling, some things. I do believe that perhaps it's going to make it more viable for a general commercial product. Again, not that I don't appreciate what you brought us, I just think for this piece of property being the front door to Lexington.
We plan on maintaining the front two parcels along Augusta Road as general commercial.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Yes, Britt?
If I could add, just for information, I've received an email from DOT, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, but the interchange project, which we're very wrapped up in because we have a lot of water and sewer in that area, is slated to move forward in 2021. So it's imminent.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Any other discussions or thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion to remain commercial, or remain general commercial.
All right. So a motion to deny the request for rezoning.
Right.
If that's the appropriate motion, John.
That's the motion you want to make, that's the appropriate one?
I'll second.
All right.
I'll second.
With our product, if we don't want to, I know it's a 15 to 1 unit, we would offer up to provide a deed with our covenant to keep it a low density at 5 to 1, if that would be beneficial.
I think at this point, the motion that's on the table is regarding the rezoning. If that's something you would like to discuss with staff as an alternative, I would welcome you to do that. I think we do need to address the rezoning that's before us this morning unless it's withdrawn. So I do think at this point, we need to, we've got a motion, we need to take a vote. If, again, if you do wish to approach the town and reconsider another option, I'd welcome you to do that. But again, I don't think from a rezoning perspective, I don't want to get into the project itself because I think we're kind of blurring the lines on the two. So I just want, I want to, if we can, stick with the rezoning. And at this point, I think the motion is to deny the request for rezoning to high-density residential. And we've got a second. Any other discussion from the commission? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, if one opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right. And again, thank you very much. Again, I would encourage you to talk with John, work with John on if there's alternatives that you'd like to talk about. That does impact, as John mentioned earlier, items two and three. John, you've talked with the owner. I think the, their sense has been if item one did not go through with a favorable recommendation to council, that they probably wouldn't wish to proceed with item two? Or do we want to go ahead and do it and send them both to council?
I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think what would be appropriate at this point would be to withdraw items two and three and then we can discuss alternatives to moving forward. But that's appeal.
All right. If that's, if that's your decision, I really need you to come up and offer the record just to state that. And what we can do is remove those from our agenda and you can, after you work with John, if you guys can come to a more amenable solution, then we can bring it back and discuss it again.
We would like to remove items number two and three.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your time. And like I say, hopefully we can, you guys can work with staff and we'll get to a place where things can work. Thank you. All right. All right. And if there's folks that are here that if you guys want to hang out and listen to the rest, you're welcome to. If you need to leave and go to other things, that you're welcome to do that as well. All right. So that will move us on then to...
Item four.
Item four, which is site plan approval for Training Center located on Park Place Trail and Darby Ambrose. John?
Mr. Alden Livingston has submitted a site plan for a cosmetology training center on approximately 3.1 acres located at the corner of Park Place Trail and Darby Ambrose Road. The project includes a 25,000-square-foot building designed to accommodate 300 students. It is similar to one that was approved on this site in 2015. The applicant intends to improve Darby Ambrose Road in a manner that coordinates with the future traffic improvements being planned by the town. Project appears to meet the town's zoning and land development requirements.
All right. Any questions, John? Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak to this?
If you'd answer the question.
Okay. All right. Any questions of the owner, developer, or staff? Again, thank you for working with Randy and staff to address concerns with Darby Ambrose. All right.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Jamie, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Again, looking forward to get this project going. I know we've been working on it for several years now.
Don't say that.
And you still said...
He tells me that all the time. We're glad, we're glad to see it moving. Thank you.
It's on schedule now.
All right. All right. Item five, Sketch Plan Approval for Revision to Sterling Bridge Subdivision. John?
Longo Homes has approved, has approval to construct 322 lots on 129.8 acres in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. The subdivision is divided into 10 phases. They've submitted a request to revise phases five and six by reducing the rear setbacks on lot numbers 145 through 175 to 10 feet. The reason for that is to allow some of the drainage to be placed in common area and additionally, some of the lots that are on there have some topo issues that are making maintenance problems for the, I get the two confused, the elite package, the smaller lot package that they build in that subdivision.
Okay. All right. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
Yes, sir.
The town looks favorably on the stormwater being held by a single owner. It prevents things like fences that have to be taken down and things like that. So while we always want to maintain setbacks, this does maintain the green space and allows us much easier access if there's an issue to get to the stormwater issues we spend in an ordinate amount of kind of working on stormwater in people's backyards. And we like to avoid that.
Absolutely. Understand completely. All right. Anybody here from the developer that wishes to speak?
I'd be delighted to answer.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Again, thank you for that point, Britt, and thank you for the willingness to take some of that advice because stormwater in backyards, I understand that personally. All right. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item six, Annexation of Property on 127 Sixteen Mile Court. John?
Sixteen Mile Court LLC owns 4.2 acres located at 127 Sixteen Mile Court and has petitioned to annex the property. A nine-unit private gated subdivision is being planned on the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential. Sixteen Mile Court is not currently classified. Due to the surrounding conditions and the intended use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is PR2 and the recommended classification of Sixteen Mile Court is RL6.
All right. Are there going to be road improvements needed on Sixteen Mile Court?
Road improvements?
Yes.
It's going to be a private road, so...
Okay. So it's going to be a private road?
I had that same question.
Thought we didn't do private roads.
There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for private roads under certain conditions. This project was started in the county and is being annexed into the town.
All right. So the property owners will be responsible for maintaining their road?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that's understood. Unless they'll be called, Mr. Britt.
There is a requirement for a recorded maintenance agreement as well as a provision on each deed saying that the town can never own or maintain the road.
Will it be gated?
It is gated.
Okay. All right.
That is the plan.
All right. Any discussion? Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to annex the property.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
All right. And a second. All right. Any further discussion?
Make a motion to annex the property with PR2 zoning, is that...
Yes.
As recommended. Yes, as recommended and the RL6 road classification, as recommended. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Item number seven is Fiddler's Green Corporation and the annexation of property behind 138 Zinker Road.
Fiddler's Green Corporation owns 8.39 acres located behind their facility on Zinker Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and protected residential. Zinker Road is already classified as a local road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the long-term plans for the property, the applicant has requested zoning it as industrial.
All right. Questions?
Is the intention just to expand the operations there?
It is, my understanding is it's being purchased by another company that does have plans to expand on that property. But we don't have any, nothing's been submitted.
If I could add a little bit to this, well, yeah, there's, a representative from the company is here and a real estate broker. The town's been, this is a industrial manufacturing facility located in town that's looking to move, but they're going to remain in town. So this is not a new business, but it's a new use for that location. We've been, the town's been working with them and there is a bigger plan to eventually have a trail system that goes around Gibson Pond. And so this property backs up to Gibson Pond and a potential purchaser is interested and has shown a willingness to work with the town to reserve when they do the site plan some of that property across the back to allow for that trail system. They're looking at it as a benefit to their employees and we're looking at it obviously as a piece in the puzzle to eventually get to that trail system that we'd like to expand on because there's a trail there now, obviously the pond construction now, and we expect to see it restored in the next little bit here. So there's, just throwing that all out there, there's a bigger picture here and it's a relationship with the town, an industrial entity that's going to remain in town and possibly even expand further than this. That's my perspective. And then like I said, there's representatives about the property if y'all have additional questions.
John, what's the setback requirements between industrial and say a residential piece of property?
Depends on who builds first.
Okay. So we've got, we've got an existing industrial piece of property and there's one building on it and it looks like they're going to expand. I guess I know the other property, I guess, is outside of town?
Yes, sir.
So, but it's residential currently, so is there, is, what would, if, as they build, what would their setback requirements expect to be?
It appears that it would be a 30-foot buffer and a 50-foot setback.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not entirely sure that adjacent property isn't zoned back or cultural in the county.
Okay. But yeah, most likely. You're correct. Other than where the house is at, I'm sure it probably is.
Yeah, there is a house on it. It's a large parcel.
There's no residential right around.
No, I don't believe anyone lives in that home.
All right. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Jarrett, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number eight is annexation of property at 4878 Sunset Boulevard.
Rudolph Ritchie owns 4.1 acres located at 4878 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A veterinary clinic and kennel is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and Sunset Boulevard is already classified as an arterial road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the intended use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is general commercial.
Rags to riches is gone.
Did you say I'm sorry?
Yeah, I heard you.
All right.
You said that like it was a bad thing.
He was a nice gentleman, that's all I'll tell you. All right. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Last item is annexation of Lexington, or property at 207 Swartz Road. Excuse me, sorry, John. Thank you.
Tricia Dion owns a parcel located at 207 Swartz Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, high-density residential, and office commercial. Swartz Road is classified as a local road. Due to the surrounding conditions of the use of property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is protected residential and Swartz Road is recommended to be classified as a local road.
Starting the year off right. Protected residential. Thank you very much, John. All right. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that concludes our business items for today. Do we have any other items for the good of the commission, commission members? Do we have anything from the town, Britt?
Yes, sir. I've got a few announcements, though not many events, but there is one. February 1st will be the next town council meeting at 6:30 p.m. at Town Hall. There is potential for that to be a remote meeting, but that will be announced closer to. Town Hall will be closed on February the 15th, which is a Monday for President's Day, and therefore will cause the town council normal work session to be moved to February 16th rather than that Monday. Also, on February 21st is the Chili Cook-Off. Proceeds from that go to help adopt a COF, which is a... Proceeds from that go to help AdoptaCup, which is a foundation for town election and police officers. It runs from noon to 5:00 PM. It'll be at the Ice House Amphitheater. It'll follow all the governor's rules for events, and you can get tickets at goblowfish.com for $10 to attend, participate. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? We're good? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor. All right. Thank you, and we will be adjourned. Thank you for watching the Town Election Planning Commission in action. Again, this meeting was held Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, at 8:00 AM, and will be aired several times throughout the week. On the behalf of the Planning Commission, I wish you a good day.